Uh, could we rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Oh, how are you? Haven't seen you in a while. Um, okay, let me just clean these glasses, get going. Um, this is just, um, for information purposes only. Uh, we have resignations that I'd less like to, um, note for the record. We have, uh, Keith Gallinelli, um, who's resigned from the Bike and Ped Committee, uh, effective August twenty-sixth. We have Linda Locke, uh, who also resigned from the Bike and Ped Committee. And we have Guy Gleestine, who, uh, who resigned from the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission. And so I just want to, uh, thank all of them for their, uh, uh, community service and for volunteering on these various boards and, I mean, commissions. And I just wanted, if anybody else wanted to make a comment before I move on to the next item.
Just, uh, as always, um, the town is run by a lot of volunteers. A lot of people give their time and expertise. And just in general, I want to thank everybody for their hours and hours of work on our behalf. And I'd also like to wish, uh, best of luck to the new appointees as we move forward here.
Ditto. Thank you all. Okay, and sorry. I was gonna waive the, um, I was gonna move to waive the, the whole reading since I know there'll be discussions. So if I could make a motion to waive the reading of item number four.
So moved.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just for the public certification, this is a special meeting, um, and we are, um, taking up the charge for charter revision, uh, for a charter revision commission. Uh, and this would be the charge for that. Um, as I, uh, alluded to and have spoken publicly about for many, uh, many times since I came into office, that, uh, our charter is supposed to be updated every ten years and it hadn't been, and that I thought it was important that we get to this work. Obviously, um, it was, this was my term, you know, was new for me and the budget. And then, of course, we were hit with a global pandemic. Uh, so, um, it was a few other things on my plate. So now, finally, hoping to refocus on some of the priorities that I think are important for our community. And so, uh, I have, uh, had the chance to talk about this with the town attorney really over the last, um, year and a half or so sporadically here and there and between other things. And, uh, finally asked if we could potentially, when the budget process was over, could we move forward with doing this? And, uh, Attorney Baldwin reached out to Mr. Mednick to, uh, have him come in and meet with me and to learn a little bit about what he does for other towns across the state. And I really enjoyed that meeting, uh, with him. Uh, I thought you were very engaging and very knowledgeable on these issues. But he spoke a lot about, uh, his work with other towns and, and I thought it was, uh, an interesting idea to have a facilitator because I know in the past our charter revision commissions have not had that. And I know that it was a tremendous amount of work for the chairperson who was chosen and, um, work that they didn't particularly enjoy. So, um, obviously, these things are open process and all, you know, all people will be able to participate and engage during it. But to have someone help the commission move forward and help facilitate and answer questions, I think is very valuable. So, um, today we are taking up the charge of the, uh, Charter Revision Commission. And, uh, Mr. Mednick is here to present and discuss, as is, uh, Town Attorney Jim Baldwin, to talk a little bit about the charge and about, uh, charter revision in general. I know that, um, Mr. Attorney Mednick is, has a PowerPoint presentation. I know that you, uh, both members of Board of Selectmen have received a copy of. And I'm, I'm glad that you both had a chance to, uh, have interactions and conversations with Attorney Mednick, um, as well. So I am going to, I don't know who's gonna take it from here, either Attorney Baldwin or Attorney Mednick. You pick.
I'm happy to defer to the town attorney, but he's not on the screen.
Uh, here I am.
So there he is.
How are you?
Good.
Good, um, yeah. Uh, I'm not sure how you wanna take it up, uh, whether you wanna address the resolution. I think maybe it makes most sense for, uh, Steve to dive into the process that's involved and go through his presentation. And, uh, that may in fact, uh, well, I think it's the best way to do things, so.
Okay.
If you would.
So I think if I push the share button, I could pu- do you want me to put this on the screen for the public?
That'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Let me make sure I've got the right one. Think it's there. Okay. You all see it?
Yep.
What I can't see is I can't see if I'm moving, um, anything when I...
You've got one, yeah, you've got one large.
You're on the first page and then when you did that, you went to the second page.
Alright, good. So you thought, alright, good. Alright, now I know what to do. Thank you.
You're on that second page.
Yeah. So thank you very, very much. Um, and what I'll try to do is I'll try to move through this as quickly as, uh, as I can, uh, but try to give you a, a sense of, um, of, um, how the charter revision process works. Um, as, as many of you know, uh, who serve in local government, uh, Connecticut, uh, operates under, uh, the Home Rule Act, which is basically, um, Article Tenth of the, of the state constitution, uh, and Title Seven of the general statutes. Uh, we won't get into the particulars of the Home Rule Act, but the, uh, theory behind the Home Rule Act was that prior to nineteen fifty-seven, all of our communities, um, were given governance documents that were, um, um, based on special acts of the General Assembly. Um, and so the Home Rule Act came in, uh, to relieve the General Assembly of having to do that task of coming up with home rule special acts that created charters for the local governments. Um, it also enables the municipality, uh, to draft the document, to adopt a home rule charter, and to amend a home rule charter. And, uh, the theory behind it is that the home rule charter is the organic law of the municipality and it supersedes anything that, um, existed prior and any inconsistent special acts, um, of the charter. I don't think that's gonna be a big issue in Fairfield, although as we delve into it, we'll, we'll figure out whether you have any pre-existing special act provisions. Um, the, uh, idea of, uh, the blueprint for governance is to, to provide, uh, the chief executive, uh, officer with a level of accountability in the administration of the town government to make sure that there is a clear delineation of those executive responsibilities and to provide for appropriate oversight for the legislative body, uh, in the adoption of ordinances, financing or government oversight of the administration. Uh, in a town such as yours where you have the Board of Selectmen and RTM and a Board of Finance, um, the, uh, the, the lines are a little blurred, but the, um, the concept still applies on the various functions of those entities in, uh, under your town charter. The, um, the goal of a charter revision is you wanna make sure your charter is as clear as it can be, uh, that it's written in language that, uh, the elected officials understand, people who have to administer it, the council understands, uh, your attorney, uh, understands, and that the public understands. You also wanna try to make the document as flexible, um, as possible, uh, so that, uh, you don't tie your hands too much with a document. If you, uh, as, as we go into the process, I'll show people, uh, the Stanford, not to insult the town, the city of Stanford, but they have a very he- heavily codified, uh, charter that doesn't give you a lot of flexibility, uh, to adopt ordinances, uh, and to take other administrative actions because you're confined by the very strict rules of your charter. So you wanna have basically a constitutional document that lays out the constitutional principles, um, uh, that are clear and allow you the flexibility to govern, to pass legislation, ordinances, and the like, uh, that will allow you to govern your community. You wanna have accountability. You wanna make sure that, um, the different levels of government have the ability to hold each other accountable. It's similar to the separation of powers at the, uh, federal and state level, although there's no judiciary, uh, uh, in, at the local level. The last, uh, bullet on this page is avoiding the culture of disregard or paralysis. Um, what happens when you have a charter that is very draconian, heavily codified, ancient, uh, and has not been touched for the last, um, few years, is that very often people look the other way and disregard their charter. Um, and, uh, but at the same time, you have, uh, you have that situation and you adhere to your charter, you sometimes have a situation again where there could, could be paralysis. And that's why it's kind of the opposite end of that. It, it's probably underscores the concept of flexibility. You wanna make sure that you have constitutional principles that you have to adhere to, but that are not so, uh, demanding that you have a very little flexibility and capacity, uh, to move swiftly and to be able to take a left or right turn or straight, um, or head down the straight path if that path is working for you. You wanna have the ability, uh, to, um, allow your, your town to compete, uh, and to provide services to the public. The First Selectman mentioned the, um, the beneficial elements of a charter revision from time to time to consider, um, in, uh, issues of magnitude and importance to the town with an eye on effective representation of the community. I think I took that language from your resolution because, uh, that was the direction, I believe, that you were heading in. Um, the important thing to point out is that a charter revision commission will ultimately establish the scope and the breadth of the charter revision. You have the ability to try to constrict them if you want. I think you're going for a broader, uh, approach to it. Um, but one of the things I always advise charter commissions when they tell me how independent they are is that you're independent to the extent that you can, um, persuade your appointing authority, in this case, the Board of Selectmen, to approve your charter. Ultimately, um, the Board of Selectmen create the commission and the last step in the process is the Board of Selectmen approving the, the work of the Charter Commission before it goes to the voters. And how do you define your scope? Under state law, you have a statutory public hearing. It's the very first thing the Charter Commission does. They have an organizational meeting, they elect their leadership. I will give them a, um, a lecture on, um, um, home rule. Hopefully, it won't put them to sleep. I hope not. And, uh, and they will then go on to the second meeting, which will be a statutory public hearing. At that, uh, hearing, that will be the first opportunity for members of the public to come in and speak to the commission and let the commission know what they believe, um, their charter should look like. Uh, keep it the same, modify it, eliminate it, change the form of government, keep the form of government. Um, all of those types of issues would be addressed at the public hearing. It would be a very broad, uh, meeting that, um, hopefully fosters, uh, a, a great deal of interest and, um, a, a really strong response. One of the things I do after the public hearing to help guide the commission is I start to establish and create a comment grid, uh, that basically tracks every idea that comes into the public hearing so the commission could eventually, um, decide what their priorities are gonna be. The next meeting, uh, that we usually have with the commission is a meeting with you, with the three of you, with members of the Board of Finance if they choose, with RTM members if they choose, and other local officials. Um, I will talk to the town attorney and the leadership of the commission to see if there are other... to see who, how those who work with the charter on a day-to-day basis feel the charter is working and what changes they think should, uh, be taken into account, um, in this process. Uh, the meeting after that is a red line session. I call it a red line exercise. Um, that's a sess- session I will hold in, in tandem with the town attorney, who works with the charter every day. We will walk through the document from, uh, the first article to the, uh, last, uh, to kind of walk through the document. He'll explain areas that have been challenging for him as counsel that have posed problems based on his experience as counsel. And it will give the commission a very strong sense of, um, of what, uh, what is in the document, how the document works. Uh, the hope would be that they would foster an understanding of the functions of government, how the charter works, and with all the testimony they have received, begin the process of, of developing, um, a, uh, scope of services uh, in terms of what it is they want to accomplish between, uh, that would be roughly sometime in October and in May of next year. And, um, the final point I, I make there is about micromanagement versus a constitution. I kind of alluded to it when I talked about the Stanford Charter, uh, where there's really an, where there's really, uh, desire to micromanage, um, all of the functions of government versus establishing a constitutional document that establishes the broad principles of, of the, uh, of the town. Uh, it's a tricky assignment. Um, a lot of people don't understand, uh, home rule. Uh, they don't recognize that municipalities have no inherent or implied powers, uh, that they only have those powers that are granted, uh, under Article Tenth and under the general statutes by the General Assembly. Um, it's the General, General Assembly who grants the authority, uh, to municipalities. Um, and, and municipalities only operate under the express grants of authority that are provided by the, um, by the General Assembly in the statutes. There are no inherent powers, no inherent authority. Um, one of the interesting questions that always comes up in a charter process is, um, basically, understanding that issue. Uh, I'll tell you how it came up recently. In one of my charter processes, I had gone through and explained how you can't have term limits for elected officials in the state of Connecticut. And it's based on the same theory of, um, not having recall in the state of Connecticut. I argued a recall case when I was a very young lawyer in nineteen eighty-five that knocked out recall in the state except for five towns that have special acts that were given to them by the General Assembly that they kept in place. And I, I told this commission that you cannot have, um, uh, term limits. And the next meeting, somebody came to me and they said, "Well, Steve, um, the town of Wilton has term limits." And I said, "Well, that, I will have to look at that." And I, I called, I represent the West Cog and I called the First Selectmen of the, uh, of the town and I talked to their attorney. And it turns out they do have it and it was passed by referendum. But the town attorney agreed with me that it should not be in their charter because it was not a special act provision. So I called the chair of the commission, who's a lawyer I happen to know, and he said to me, "Well, you know, there was no statutory, uh, prohibition against us in the local town doing that, and we thought, therefore, we had it." That is not the way you analyze whether you have authority. You analyze your authority on the basis of whether there is statutory authority for the act, the enactment. Um, because when it comes to the governance of local government, uh, silence is not authority. So either it's expressly granted or there's a inherent ability to do something that is expressly granted to you. But if the law is silent on it, uh, you do not have authority to enact, um, provisions in your charter or in your ordinances. Um, there are other impacts that, um, the legislature has provided, um, in a, in a, in a sense that really constrict local government. Uh, they're found in the, uh, in collective bargaining agreements and under MIRA. I'm sure you've come across those, um, eh, over the course of time in, in Fairfield. And then again, uh, the concept of, uh, how does your charter work versus how do, how do your ordinances work? And my theory of the case is to try to push as much to your ordinances as you can so that the ordinances are consistent with, uh, the express grants of authority, but also consistent with your charter. Um, try to govern through your ordinances. Process to, this, this afternoon or, uh, what you're looking at is creating a charter commission. It's done in two steps. Today, you will initiate the process and, um, the second resolution, which will...
Can I skip?
Yeah.
Just a point of clarification. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, when we talk about the resolutions required by the statutes, are those statutes are specifically from the Home Rule Act and no other language? Is that correct? So there isn't a reference to something else? It's really the Home Rule Act that is the reference?
It's the Home Rule Act. Resolutions, uh, you know, the whole process is governed by...
The whole thing, by that. Okay, which is, again, for, for clarification. So everything we're looking at today is, that's the reference, the Home Rule Act.
That is correct. Everything is under the Home Rule Act.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Steve, can we blow up the, the, what you've got on the screen right now? It's, it's, uh, very hard to read.
Let me, uh...
What are your eyes getting old, Mr. Flynn?
My whole body's getting old there. It's not just the eyes. I wish it was just the eyes.
Let me try to, uh, do them. Let's see if I could blow it up. Hold on. One sec. Well, I can hear what I'll do. I'll, I'll do it this way as I go through it and I'll... There we go. There we go. So you create by, uh, adopting two ordinances. Um, one of the things I try to encourage is that we're not looking at home rule as a partisan activity. Um, not more than one-third of your members can hold other public offices in town and not more than a bare majority can be of any political party. Um, uh, I think it's really, really important and I think that the towns that really take it seriously, um, really, uh, understand that, that, uh, they, they try to avoid partisan activities. I just went through one, which I'll be happy to talk about at some point, that was, uh, that got very partisan at the end, both, um, between the parties and within the parties. It really was a very difficult process. Um, uh, and I've been lucky in the twenty-five or so charters I've done to have avoided that. Um, it was not avoidable in one town where I just, uh, went through the process. Um, there are, I'll go to the next concepts here. So, um, you then, um, whoops. You then have a situation where you, um, have two required public hearings. I talked about one of them already. I'll talk about the other in a moment. Um, the first, uh, is the public hearing at the beginning of the process. You also have a public hearing at the end of the process before the commission sends the product to the, um, the Board of Selectmen. Um, we'll talk about the work plan in a minute. Um, again, at the end of the process, you, uh, submit, the Charter Commission will submit their report, uh, to the, um, Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen, uh, then has a public hearing itself and then can either accept the report, uh, as drafted by the commission or come back to the commission with, um, recommendations for, for action. If, uh, they're not happy with the report or have some questions, it goes back to the, uh, commission for, um, for, um, for final action by the commission.
So Steve, Steve, it's Tom. Can I ask a question?
Of course. Please.
Is the, is the process then that it's, it's not a, a vote on each individual, um, recommendation? But rather it's, it's a, we've gotta go back to the commission. They've either gotta refine it or not and bring it back in its totality?
Yeah, what happens is, well, it really depends. You have the option at that moment to look at everything they've done. And you can make, let's say they've come up with ten proposals.
Right.
And you think five of them are really good. You have questions about the other five. Um, you would then make recommendations to them and say, "We see where you're going with this, but we're not really clear on what it is. Here's what we'd like to recommend that you think about in these other five areas." And they then would, uh, get the charter back and they would have to decide whether they believe that, um, they can accommodate the Board of Selectmen, which would be a worthy thing for them to think about, or whether they want, wanna insist on trying to persuade the Board of Selectmen that, uh, the proposal they made is fine the way it is. I recently had a pro- yeah.
Yeah, so what happens if, uh, you know, we accept five, we make recommendations on five, they come back and accept our recommendations on four, and then we've gotta hold up on the, the fifth one where they say, "You know what? Go pound sand. We're not gonna do this." And we say, "Well, you go pound sand. We're not gonna approve this." Then, then what happens?
Well, it comes back to you and, and I'll explain it again a little later. It comes back to you and, um, you then can reject, uh, their proposal and accept nine of them and reject the tenth one. And hopefully, the one that you're, uh, looking at in isolation won't impact anything else that they've done.
So can we, so that means we can accept nine and reject the tenth and the document still moves forward with those nine revisions and the tenth one gets left on the, on the cutting room floor? So in essence, it's not an all or nothing. It is interpretive back and forth.
It is not all or nothing. Um, the last steps in the process get a little tricky because, um, and what I try to do throughout the process, so we'll get to spend a fair amount of time with you, um, officially, is to make sure that the Board of Selectmen is pretty much aware of what the commission is doing, to make sure that everybody, um, is, um, fully apprised, uh, so that...
No surprises. Yeah.
So there's no surprises in the process. And we try to work them out. I try, in the best processes, to have everything done in the first step so that when they come to you in May or June, um, you'll have a product that, I hope, that the Board of Selectmen will be able to approve. Um, who knows? There may be some refinements necessary, but usually I try to, uh, resolve those matters, um, in that process because it gets more difficult as you get to the end of the process because, um, if you don't bring it up in your recommendation session, um, and a better idea comes up how to deal with it, um, once it gets back to the commission, they can't deal with it. They can only address those items that were, that were sent to them through recommendations. So as we get to that process, I'll be counseling you very carefully on, um, making sure that you bring up all the ideas that you need to, to make sure they have maximum ability to, uh, to respond.
Okay.
Alright? And so if, again, if they, if you accept it, it's, um, it's, uh, the final report and your, then next task would be to develop the questions for the ballot and, uh, the process is over. If, if they're not rejected, then it goes back to them. They have thirty days, uh, to act on your recommendations and then send them back, uh, to you. And they would then have, uh, um, you would then have fifteen days to approve their recommenda- approve the final package or, uh, in whole or in part. So you have the ability to approve it in its entirety or reject it in its entirety or in part, to answer your question.
What about, what about the, what about the voters at the referendum? What can they do?
What happens is you, at the end of the process, will develop, um, I'll go to the next, uh, that's a great segue. Um, what happens is you submit questions, uh, to the voters and the voters will then act upon the questions. Depending on what we do with the charter revision, uh, will govern what kind of questions, uh, that, that will be presented. Very often, in a substantial charter revision, uh, there's an omnibus question that deals with cleanups throughout a document. Uh, one of the things I recommend to towns is that they develop a definitions section of a charter. Well, that doesn't really change anything substantively, uh, but it does, uh, try to establish uniformity throughout the document. And, um, you probably wouldn't have a separate question for definitions, but if you change a few other things that are administrative, it would fall into a broad administrative question. If you were to address terms of office, tends to be one that becomes a, um, a big issue for a lot of communities, you might create a separate question for that. Uh, so the number of questions is really based on, uh, the work that you, um, uh, that the commission does and how you politically decide to present the questions to the voters. Um, one of the other things, in fact, I was working on it today for one of my towns, is a, um, an explanatory text that the town is allowed to, um, uh, pay for and print in poster size, um, so that the people of the community can see, uh, section by section, chapter by chapter, um, what was done to the charter during the revision process. Because you can't articulate everything in a, um, in a major review of the charter and therefore the state is provided... And therefore the state has provided towns with an ability uh to put out an explanatory text.
So so Steve, I guess it it's very similar. What's important at that point. Is that to to your earlier comment about, hey, the review and the Board of Selectmen review it, you don't want to take out something that's inconsistent with other changes. I I guess that's the same thing on the referendum, right? You want to make sure that whatever the questions are, they're all encompassing. So you're not rejecting. Half of a proposition and accepting another half that makes it unworkable.
Yeah. And it's it it really is an art form because um.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes I've been in charter processes where somebody wants to hide a major thing in the omnibus question. Uh, and I usually recommend against that. I always say that if there's something controversial, you want to tackle it directly. Uh, because you don't want to bring down and throw all the work out that the commission did uh to clean up the charter. If um, uh, if there's a controversial matter in it. So I always try to recommend um pulling out of the broad question. Anything that might be controversial, anything that might um uh really elicit public response and fight it on the merits. Uh, win it or lose it on the merits because you don't get this chance very often. Um, and and so I really try to encourage that uh we uh separate out those things that are most controversial. Um, the other two points here are, um, the question has to be submitted by early September, sixty days before the election. Which means your Charter Commission, a year from um, a year from now, you'll be done. Uh, if you're, if we're still talking at the Board of Selectmen, because you haven't approved it, uh, we're probably going to be too late to get it on the ballot. Um, for the November election a year from now, because it has to be submitted sixty days before um, the uh, the election. And the final action is the voters get to vote on the questions at referendum.
Thank you for walking us through it.
Yeah, well, that's okay. Now I'm going to go through some of this again briefly and I'll I'll run through this more quickly if I could. Again, I've talked about the organizational meeting. There's a statutory public hearing. Uh, we have the work meetings. I talked about that a moment ago, the Board of Selectmen, um, and uh, the Red Line Sessions. And the only point I want to focus on is the last point, the subsequent meetings point uh at the end of the um, of the slide. And so just because you have these public meetings, doesn't mean you don't have public meetings throughout the entire process. You have, all of your meetings are public. You can include sometimes when you're addressing an issue. Let me think of a good example. If we happen to look at your budget process, for example, um, and obviously the Board of Finance would play a big role in that. We would probably have several meetings. One of our meetings may be a panel discussion of of including yourselves. Members of the Board of of Finance, uh, and other people who are involved in the budget process, your finance director. To talk to the commission and the public about, here's how the process works. Um, a subsequent meeting would be a panel of experts. I would bring in people who are involved in the Government Finance Association, GFOA. I would bring in um, finance directors or mayors or first selectmen or members of Board of Finances from other communities. Uh, that have had have been particularly innovative uh to talk about uh what they do, what they have done. Um, and following those two meetings, uh, which are basically panel discussions, uh, the commission would then sit down and think. Okay, are we comfortable with what we've got? Are there little tweaks we need to make? Or is a substantial rewrite uh in play? And um, I would, you know, I would provide background materials for the members of the body. And they would then make their judgment and they would give um their instructions to me. Steve, can you draft a model? Budget provision for our charter? Or Steve, can you make this tweak? Uh, whatever it would be, would be at their direction, following uh some substantial due diligence. Um, and so that last bullet, sub-bullet, is basically your work meeting. That that's that's, those are the meetings that we'll be conducting from October through the end of April, early May. Uh, that would then take us to a point where we have drafted a document. I'll enlarge this. Um, uh, so that you can see this. And again, you'll see this uh stuff I talked about a few minutes ago. Um, you know, again, we would go back and have the um, uh, second public hearing. After the second public hearing, the commissioner would make its final changes. They'd submit the document to the town clerk. Uh, the revisions would be on your agenda. Uh, you would then review this again. This is just what we talked about a few minutes ago. Um, you would have a public hearing. You would take action, which might be final action. Um, it could result in recommendations and then the commission would ultimately uh look at those recommendations and um. Um, come back to you at the end of mid-July, the end of July, uh, so that you would then take action on their final report. Um, within thirty days after they look at your recommendations, they send it back to you. You'd have fifteen days. Uh, you would then approve the questions. There has to be newspaper publication. And again, that's September submission date and the referendum, which I believe would be November eighth of twenty twenty-two. Um, my role uh would be, again, to provide legal advice. Um, as the first selectman said earlier, uh, to be a facilitator, to help walk through the thicket of this process, working with your town attorney. Um, and to provide research and preparation for workshops. Uh, it would be as extensive as you want it want it to be or would be limited uh by the work of the commission. And one of the things I always tell the Appointing Authority, uh, as well as the commission, is be smart the way you use my time. Um, we're not going to know uh how much time will be needed until we get through the early stages, the public hearing. And the um, meetings with elected officials. Uh, we'll have a better sense of how much time we will be devoting this to this project. After we get through those processes and begin to develop the scope for the entire enterprise. Uh, but even then, uh, we have to decide how much time do you want um to have council spend um. Uh, on these matters. And I'm pretty judicious in the way I work on these matters. I work very closely with. The town attorney or the corporation counsel um in the the towns that I work on to see if there's a division of labor. That will help save um some money during this process. Um, there may be meetings I don't need to attend. Um, I tend to put the panels together for everybody, but um. If you want to save some money, I don't need to sit through the panel discussions, although uh some people find it helpful to have me there. Um, but that's, that would be a call we would make as we go through the process. Uh, but the role is um, again, legal, but it's also administrative where I help the chair. Um, really um, chart the path for the commission throughout the entire process. Uh, and that's you. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I've got to get out of this. I always have a problem getting out of sharing. Somebody tell me what I do. Stop sharing. There we go.
That was pretty easy.
Right.
Well, thank you for uh taking the time.
I hope I didn't go too quickly. I didn't want to take too much of your time.
No, thank you very much. Um, so I'm going to open it up. Well, I obviously opened it up to the board because I did have an opportunity, like I said earlier. Um, to have a meeting with Attorney Mednick uh to discuss all of this in in depth, just to understand it better. So I'll just open it up. Who would like to um?
First selectwoman Brenda.
Yes.
Maybe maybe uh to put the motion on the table. I don't think that it's been moved yet for this resolution to be moved. And then and then follow with discussion.
Okay.
Move it.
And I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and go ahead Nancy.
Um, and to be clear, we were just moving for discussion purposes, not on the actual vote. Um. Thank you so much. And and Steve, what a pleasure to meet you in person. We spent um a nice time talking last week and I want to thank you for what I believed was a very informative. And productive discussion. I uh thought I knew about the process somewhat, but I had a real education in speaking with you and and really further understood what the role and responsibility of a charter is, its importance. Uh, and the importance of getting it it right out of the gate, which I know that uh is what we all intend to do and want to do. Um, so just to to summarize, we're voting to today, just as Brenda had said, on the establishment of this commission. Based on language from the Home Rule Act and it's our right, it's our obligation, and it's just sort of plain good governance. Because this is um. Such an important document that really talks, in my opinion, about who we are as a community and how we're going to govern. Um, I do have some language that I'd like to propose uh as additions and some slight changes. Uh, based on just a definition of of the importance of what this charter is. But then also uh using some words and principles that I believe should be the focus and. Part of the focus and the intention, some of the intention of of how we look at this work. Um, something that I'm also very interested in um is the possibility of codifying more specific terms. Um, and here I'm I'm speaking about the provision that specifically touches on party affiliation. You had alluded to your experiences mostly being good. And I know we all hope going into this that we will behave in a bar- that the commission itself will behave in a wholly. Um, constructive bipartisan manner. Not with sort of dirty word politics, but with politics as as um not a part of this. And I'm just wondering if there's language that we can use, because as the charge reads, and again, knowing that is coming from state statute. Um, it is somewhat vague in the sense of um Brenda and Attorney Baldwin and. And you, Steve, have alluded to this being a a um, a true bipartisan effort. But how do we codify that? Because as it stands, it could be four Republicans and three unaffiliated. If, again, that was a choice. I am trusting what you're saying, that the intention is to have this really a. A three Democrat, three Republican, unaffiliated voter and and that. But is there a way, is there precedent? Um, in these charges to codify language that really does spell out the party makeup? Have you had that? Because again, you did say that it's mostly been good, but there was that one time. And while I do trust Fairfield, I do trust the people that we will ultimately put in place here. It's just that extra layer of comfort, um, perhaps. So is there precedent?
May I answer Madam Chair?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right. I want to go through the chair. I just wanted.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I I have never seen um, in any of my experiences, any modification of the state standard. I think the state standard is is pretty clear. Uh, you could end up a result as the as the one you described. But most of the time, the Appointing Authority has been fairly judicious uh in those appointments. Now, the irony of the problem that we faced in one of these other communities is that neither party had a bare majority of the body and we ended up in a real. Difficult situation. So um, uh, tightening the language wouldn't have helped there. Um, we ended up with a very difficult um commission. Um, the statute is pretty clear, although as in the minority party representation statutes. Um, it's kind of a misnomer because it's a cap on majority representation. Um, but the minority is basically anybody who is not in the majority. So it could be unaffiliated. It could be Green Party. It could be Democrats or Republicans, depending on who the majority is. Um, it could be taxpayer parties. Um, I think that it's really up to the three of you are going to be making these appointments within the next thirty days. To try to come up with a reasonable um, uh, group of people. I've never seen, I've never seen language that goes beyond the statutory construct would be the answer.
Okay, so I would love just to hear and and Brenda, um, I would love for you to say that I I would just, I again, for the record, because I I trust in. This process and the statute, but that that is the commitment um as the minority, as the Democrat and a minority party member here. I would just love to hear that commitment that um, that that's the intention and that's going forward.
Hey Nancy, isn't isn't that, isn't that actually saying that that you don't trust it though?
It's it's not. I think it's it's really just, I'm representing a a party and a point of view. So my personal feeling is, that aside, I'm I'm representing. A constituency and a group of people who would want that assurance. So I can't give it on behalf of somebody else. So what do I have then? I have Brenda's word out here, out loud in public and I have. Uh, we have, we could codify it if if that was the case, but I, if there isn't um the the will to do that, then I would just love to hear it said.
So Nancy, I'm happy to uh address that. So I think Attorney Mednick, um, you know, broke it out in the way that I understood it. So this is the charge, right? A broad charge about changing the charter, establishing a commission. The next, in the next thirty days, according to Mr. Attorney Mednick, we have to appoint members. Now I have, um, you know, uh. Talked a little bit about how I wanted this to be bipartisan. It's important to me. You know, having led this town now for almost two years, um, you know, I've learned. Lifetime's worth of information, um, in in itself, right, in this job. And so. I don't want it to be partisan at all. Uh, I want to have, and as um Attorney Mednick said, we could have. You know, a majority of Republicans on it. Um, but I I'm I'm choosing not to do that. I I want our community to trust it. I want you to trust it. Um, I want it to be equal, a number of uh Republicans and Democrats and my my um. I have reached out to some people as I've shared, uh, that I want, you know, three Democrats, three Republicans and one unaffiliated uh person. And obviously, you know, I think, listen, I don't know. I know the last, I was pretty engaged in the last charter revision uh back under. Uh, First Selectman Flato. I did attend a lot of those meetings because I was very interested in the Board of Ed. Um, pieces. It was after I had left the Board of Ed, but I had a real interest in that because um. I thought that actually the way that they changed the um terms was going to leave the Board of Ed. Uh, with a lot, potentially a lot of new members and not a lot of people with some history and experience when they changed it. So and I actually teamed up with some of my former rivals, um, uh, one high school, two high school rivals. Uh, to have to convey that information to the Char- Charter Revision Commission at the time. And honestly, um, I, you know, I thought that that committee, commission. The members on it didn't act in a partisan way. I think it was more philosophical, right? They were listening to all the information. They were conducting public hearings, allowing uh people to speak and share their input. And as Attorney Mednick has mentioned, you know, they're going to interview us, they're going to interview the Board of Finance, the RTM. And all of these different organizations and groups. And so we'll have that ability to have our input, not just as elected officials, but in other opportunities as well. So that is my hope. That's what I want to do, is do it just like that. And so I I I hope that we can come to an agreement on that. Um, I I have two elected officials in mind, uh, one Republican, one Democrat. According to Attorney Mednick, that's the minimum you can have. Or the maximum, excuse me, you can have. So that's what I want, some some experience as elected officials, but then also people. Who are not really involved. Um, they're just want to do something good for our community. Because obviously, at the end of the day, you know, this is about the governance of our town, the the document that that we refer to and that helps guide us, right? And so that's important, I think, just important um on its face. So I don't know if that answers your question, um, but I I pledge to you that that's not at all my intention and I. Pledge to bring four uh people, I think, a balanced committee, number one, and people that I think are. Balanced people who just want to serve their town and try to improve our town charter.
So with your word and your word on record and with Steve's assurance that this is um standard and. That you had not, there isn't precedent to have more specific language, then I'm comfortable and I appreciate that and um. Look forward to discussing those uh commit- potential commission members at in due time and um. They do have their work cut out for them. So I know that this is something we will all take very seriously when that that vote comes to to bear, so.
So a a couple of things on that. I think that the the most important thing is to get um highly qualified individuals to serve on the committee. I think that the most important thing is to get highly qualified individuals to serve on the committee, number one. Number two, in going through the document that Steve had provided, as well as listening to the presentation and asking questions, I have faith in the process that we're going to get a balanced result as well. Because remember, the town in terms of voter rolls is quite balanced. And at the end of the day, this has to go to referendum. So I think as the process is going through, and as the public hearings are going to happen, and as the town bodies are going to weigh in on this, and as then, at the end of the day, the general public weighs in and gets to vote on this, I do think we're going to have a nonpartisan, balanced result at the end.
Yep. Brenda, I have two amendments I'd like to bring forward, if I may.
Yes, I'm aware of them. I appreciate that.
Okay, so thank you. I spoke to both Attorney Mednick and Attorney Baldwin. And I'd like to say that Attorney Mednick had said that, in theory, while he was not commenting on the, he was not having an, forming an opinion on what I'm proposing, he certainly said that what I was proposing was appropriate and reasonable. And I believe Attorney Baldwin, it's fair to say, you concurred. Should I read it as a discussion point? Or should I make it as an official motion, Attorney Baldwin?
Well, I think that it's more efficient for you to make the motion.
Okay, so in between, as it's written on the agenda, in between the two paragraphs, whereas, I'd like to add the whereas. So just after it says on November 27, 2006, and, quote, whereas, "Our charter is the foundation that guides principles for governance. It defines our community, its powers and functions, and essential procedures of our town government." And so that is the official motion. I'd like to move to add that language as read.
Fine with that, seconded.
Well, all in favor of the motion for the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm going to open it up for discussion. Tom's fine with it. I actually, Attorney Baldwin, did share it with me, obviously, before the meeting. And I appreciate you, you know, taking the time to work with both of them. And yes, I'm fine with it as well.
Great. I like that it's just a clarifying sentence about the importance of what it is, and I think it sets a tone, so I appreciate it. So do we?
I'll vote on the amendment. Yeah, we've got to vote on the amendment.
Okay.
So you have, we have a motion, and so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're back to the resolution as amended.
Yes, and I have another motion to make, to amend, which is the paragraph where it says, resolved, the first resolved, not now therefore be it resolved, but the paragraph that starts resolved in bold.
Yep.
So I would like to amend that paragraph to say that said commission shall be empaneled for the purpose of undertaking a thorough review of the current charter and all aspects of the structure of town government, being mindful of adhering to principles of sustainability, and that it is equitable for and inclusive of all our citizens. And then it goes on to continue. So I'd like to make the motion to amend it as I just read.
Okay. Tom, second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, I will open it up for discussion.
What is, explain the sustainability aspects of it, how the charter talks about sustainability or where it talks about sustainability, and the way it's written, while there are noble goals or noble guiding principles, is sustainability above all other principles? Why are we calling that one out as compared to, you know, saying, keeping in mind, amongst principles, these two? The one about equality and all that, I understand. Particularly Nancy, with your task force, why you're doing that. But just explain it to me.
Sure. As you said, guiding principles. I think a charter is as much a statement of who we are as a community as is our budget. It's a reflection of who we are and where we want to go. And I think considering, among many other things that we may consider, I think it is important to consider principles of sustainability and issues of sustainability, and how those are, how the rules we make are dictated by those things and through those lenses of sustainability.
But give me an example. Give me an example of sustainability. I mean, Steve, if you know of something, do other charter revision commissions have this? And I'm not arguing it, I just don't. I'm trying to understand the applicability of sustainability. And is this one of these things where, if that's a guiding principle, are we going to do something in the charter where we do something to make it sustainable above something else? I mean, Steve, do you know where I'm going with this? Or?
Not precisely, but the way, I'm assuming we're talking about sustainability from an environmental perspective.
That's what I think as well.
And the way it would be done is, you know, sustainability is an issue that is addressed more substantially by the federal or state governments, obviously, in terms of establishing policies. But where it could come into play in a local charter is when you're, and again, I haven't studied your charter to this degree at this point, is you may look at it from an economic perspective and a budgetary perspective and a structural perspective to make sure there are departments that address these issues, not in the sense that you're going to tackle the substantial issue that is an international issue, but to the extent that it may have budgetary implications and cultural implications in your community.
Give me an example of how the charter would, yeah.
I can't think of an instance where I have seen it. I'm not saying that it hasn't existed, but it could fall in that context. That would be the context that I would see it in a charter revision.
But you haven't seen it in the past.
Not in any of the charters I've dealt with. I'd have to go back and look to say that definitively. But it was not an issue when Ms. LeFritz brought it up. It was not an issue I was surprised to see in this context either.
So I mean, this is the charge, this is the charge establishing the commission. This isn't actually the document, this isn't what they're going to come out with.
Exactly, and I think to the point.
Nancy, if I'm right, you're just asking that this be a consideration during?
Exactly. It's not the only consideration, and it is not the only lens. It is two principles that, for me, I felt it would be an important statement to make. And it seems that this is.
When you call out.
Not at the exclusion of others.
Right, that's, Nancy, and that's my, that's my conundrum here, is when you call out these two, setting aside all the others that should be consideration, you are specifically elevating these two to essentially the pole position, which, you know, the diversity and inclusion one, I'm, I get it, right? I get it. We want to make sure that our government is fair to everybody, having something in there that says that is understandable. To say that then sustainability is also one of the core, the most important of the two principles, again, to the exclusion of what else, right? What are we going to do differently?
Not to the exclusion, but I would argue for that importance. And we can, to use a phrase that Attorney Baldwin and I often like to use in our exchanges, we can agree to disagree, but I felt.
I'm not disagreeing, yeah, not disagreeing, I'm asking for.
I am not saying that it's at the exclusion of anything else, but I do believe that principles of sustainability, inclusion are core values to the community I live in, and of paramount importance to the process at this stage.
So sustainability is more important than a ton of the other items, with the exception of the inclusion and diversity?
I am saying that it is important.
Jim, how do we phrase this? Or Steve, how do we phrase this? Do you know what I'm saying based on my commentary? How we're calling out two at the exclusion of a bunch of others and elevating them? And I don't want to send that message that sustainability, I'm fine with sustainability, don't get me the wrong way. I just don't want to say it's more important than everything else.
But I don't, just to argue, and again, we can go back and forth, I believe that we've come up with language that does not say this is elevating above all else.
Read it to me, read it to me again then, Mr. Baldwin, if you don't mind.
Sure, you want me to do that? Or you?
Yeah, please.
I have it pulled up right here. And this, again, is working through with Attorney Baldwin's perusal and wordsmithing. For the purpose of undertaking a thorough review of the current charter and all aspects of the structure of town government, being mindful of adhering to principles of sustainability, and that it is equitable for and inclusive of all our citizens.
How about being mindful of sustainable, or being mindful of all of our core values to include sustainability and equitable, and the language you have? Something to that nature, someone more elegant than, eloquent than I can.
I think.
Including but not limited to, or something like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it's, Steve, in legalese, it would be inter alia, wouldn't it?
What's that?
It would be inter alia, among other things.
Among other things, yeah.
Right, inter alia, being mindful.
Inter alia, including but not limited to, it could be any of those things.
That's the concept of inter alia.
If you put that in there, I'll be fine with it. I'm not exactly sure the best way to phrase it, but if you're amenable to that, I will, I can support this.
So for the purpose of moving forward here, are we comfortable with, as I read it, but knowing we need to adjust that slightly per your discussion, just so we can move forward? Because I just want it to be, you want to do it here, okay, so.
We have to, we can't do it here, so it's an amendment to the amendment. But I'm not exactly sure the best way. I'm looking at the attorneys for the best way to.
I defer to the attorney, Brenda, to.
Jim, do we pull the amendment back?
I think you can.
It's one, we're really talking about one word.
Yeah, revise it, though, I'm saying to one.
You can make a motion to amend the motion.
Exactly.
The amendment, that's what he's doing.
That's what I'm doing, I just need the terminology.
Well, Steve, I always, I'll work with you on this here, public discourse, but being mindful, comma, either inter alia, or, comma, or among other things. But the lawyer in me wants to say inter alia.
Of course you do.
Can we do that in parentheses?
I think it should be.
The non-lawyer in me wants the town to really understand what that word means.
Exactly.
So.
I think among other things is probably the better way to approach it.
Yeah, we might want to, we might want to be more straight talking in our resolution.
Do we vote down my amendment and then?
No, 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 no.
We'll amend it, we're going to amend it.
We just amend it. I would like, I would like to make the motion to amend Nancy's motion to include the words "among other things" as articulated by our two attorneys. And I'd ask for.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're to the amended, amended amendment, or the amended amendment.
Yeah, before.
I'll make the motion, oh, sorry.
Well, no, before we do, can I?
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, no problem, because I didn't get the chance. A couple of things. First of all, thank you for the presentation. It was very informative, it's good to know what this process is. From my perspective is, we start out on this, there's four real key things that I've seen in our charter that I just want to go on the record about. Number one, we've had some times where the existing charter, during my last 14, 15 years in town government, has been inconsistent with the state statutes. So it's very important to me that whatever we do, and Steve, this would be something, and I'm not trying to give a checkbook here, but this would be something where I think it's very important that we do that level of legal review. And I don't even know if it's something we can run by the state before we adopt it, to say that they don't see anything that's inconsistent with the state statute, because that has caused pain points in the last 15 years or so of my involvement.
So can I just, Tom, is this regarding this actual motion that's on the table or the charter in general?
It's the charter in general, and I just want to, give me a couple of minutes and I'll wrap up, if you don't mind. It's, because it's the importance of this, of what we're doing here with the charter. It's, the other thing I've noticed is we've been inconsistent within the charter itself. In other areas, we've been vague. And in other areas, such as in the budget area that you spoke of, Steve, we were inefficient in the way we manage it. So my points are to support the First Selectwoman's impaneling of this and the charge for this commission. And much like we talked about the Strategic Planning Committee, to really say that there should not be sacred cows as it relates to the management of town government. We should be looking at this and cleaning it up. So I'm happy to support the motion to put together the charge with that viewpoint, so.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Brenda, thank you.
So, so Jim, do we need to read the whole amended?
I don't, if I can jump to where you're going, I don't think you voted on this particular amendment yet. And I would just like to maybe read.
We did, I thought. We did. Oh, we voted on my amendment to her amendment, but maybe not the amendment overall, Jim?
Correct, that's correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I get that.
And just for clarity's sake and for the record, I'd like to read it as I have.
Yes.
Crafted it on my computer here, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
Yes, please, thank you.
So the current charter and all aspects of the structure of town government, and the new, the amendment, as I understand it's been voted on in the past, is, comma, being mindful of adhering to, comma, among others, among others, others, comma, principles of sustainability, and that it is equitable for and inclusive of all our citizens, semicolon, and, comma, be it further, and then it continues as written. And I simply said, among others, so that it's referring to other principles. That was.
Yes.
Not, as opposed to other things. That was my slight word change. So if the board accepts that rendition, then I think you're good to vote on the full resolution as amended.
I do.
Yes. Now, thank you, Jim. Do we now vote, though, on the amended amendment? Or we vote on the amended resolution?
You vote on the resolution as amended.
And we don't have to read it?
I will move to waive the reading, if that is a thing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the amended resolution to establish a charter revision commission. A challenge.
Seconded.
Any additional discussion? Okay, well, all in favor then?
Aye.
Um, I'm excited, uh, about this to, I think it's gonna be really, uh, interesting to watch this process move forward and uh, facilitators of, um, learning from you, Attorney Mednick, about how this works and what other towns do and so on and so forth. And also the input from our community, uh, I think is gonna be very valuable. And so I just, it's, I think it's really, uh, it's a cool thing to be blunt about.
It's about dang time.
It's about dang time. All right, yes, that's what I like, plain talk. Not that word that Attorney Baldwin was throwing around before.
In my forty-three years of law practice, I've had very few people say that what I do is cool, so I'm really very happy to hear that.
I think, I think, I think you're gonna be very cool too, and I think our community's gonna enjoy.
You're the one we've been waiting for.
Yeah, and I think.
Oh, my goodness, right.
The commission's gonna enjoy working.
I'm not touching that one.
All right, well, Attorney Mednick, thank you very much for your time and for, we look forward to working with you.
I look forward to working with you and talking to, uh, Ms., uh, to my friend here about Waterbury. We grew up, grew up in the Waterbury area together.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye bye.
All right, thanks so much. All right, so our next item, um, is, uh, item number five, tax refunds. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of one thousand one hundred fifty-two ninety-six. Do I have a motion to approve?
Summowed.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Not for me.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And I just want to, for, uh, purposes of announcement, um, as we've all known, we, we've had a large, uh, we've had a property that's had delinquent taxes for a very long time, uh, in our town. It's called the Jack property. And, um, I, uh, had been in discussions with the attorney and, uh, this owner or the buyer of this property, um, and I would like to announce that, uh, the property sold and a check was depa-, uh, handed over to us today in the amount of six million eight hundred and seventeen three oh five. So that's a very nice thing to be able to announce to both of you and, um.
Can you, um, state for the record the address? Are you?
Uh, I don't have the address. Um, it's Pequot Avenue, um.
Yeah.
It's at Pequot, yeah.
Big piece of property.
Yeah.
Um, and there's conservation easements and there's been a lot of things, but, um, I think all sides are very happy. I think, uh, planning and zoning or conservation or all of that, so.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Brenda, I mean, select woman, cup check, um, it is, I believe the address is eleven thirty-five Sasko Hill Road.
That's it, Sasko.
It's Sasko Hill.
Sorry, yes. And so, uh, this is good because this, this amount of money has been out to our town for a very long time and, uh, I'm very glad, uh, that we now have it. Um, I would like to announce, uh, a couple of things if you both don't mind. Um, our, our town librarian, Celine Murtha, uh, as we know, uh, said she would be, uh, retire, uh, re- retiring from the position. And tomorrow is her official last day. And so I just want to publicly, uh, announce, uh, that and also publicly thank her. She was really very, uh, good, uh, director, uh, department head when we, when the pandemic hit and we had to make some, you know, I needed the department heads to really, uh, come in and work with me and make changes to be able to uh, handle this. And, you know, as you both know, we laid off a significant amount of part-time people because we weren't open and the library had a significant amount of part-time people. And so, uh, Celine stepped up to the plate and came in for numerous meetings with me and my administration and, you know, it was just a really a pleasure to work with, uh, not just as a manager of a department and, and the library uh, and, or the department, but also of an amazing librarian, uh, such positive feedback, not only from the people that worked with her and under her, but all the, uh, part-time people too and from our community. So, um, she is, I'm, I'm really sad that she's leaving because I thought she was very good at what she did. And sometimes someone has a specialty in a certain area and they may not be the best sort of manager, um, but I thought Celine possessed both those qualities. And so I'm sorry to see her leave, but I do want to wish her, uh, much happiness and and success in, um, her future and her next journey. And the library, uh, the library board is currently working in the process um, of interview, interviewing people and then I have to approve it. So that we're working on that now and hopefully we'll come up with some decent candidates, uh, very soon.
Um, Brenda, I'd like to echo your thank yous. Uh, she did a very nice job of the library and most assuredly during COVID and during difficult times. Uh, as well as let us not forget, we had the water main issue there uh, a couple of years back and, and had to navigate through that. So, um, thank you very much for all your efforts on behalf of the people of Fairfield. Uh, best of luck to you in retirement. And, and, uh, you know, we look forward to, um, getting an equally competent person. She leaves, uh, big shoes to fill.
You took the words right out of my mouth. I was gonna say those are going to be some very large shoes to fill. Um, we're so lucky to have the library system that we do here in town. It's such an incredible asset to this community and that's in large part by, by the work that Ms. Murtha has done and, and it's a great legacy she's leaving. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you both. And I just wanted to, um, talk a little bit about, um, uh, the recent, uh, mask mandate, uh, policy in the town of Fairfield. As you both know, we discussed this at our, uh, formal meeting, the last Board of Selectment meeting. And, um, at that time, we still were in the orange, you know, when Fairfield County moved into the red zone, our town was in gray. And then we had moved into orange, but I still didn't feel the need to put a mandate in place. I wanted to watch it as I had, uh, shared with our community and also at that meeting that I, we were watching it very closely, but as, um, I was getting reports from our health department on a daily basis, even before the state put us in the red, um, I had, uh, seen our hospitalization numbers ticking up in Fairfield County, which actually frankly was the most, um, poignant piece of information for me. Uh, the case rates were going up, but the hospitalizations, uh, were the most alarming to me. So I decided to do that, um, and obviously it was met with a lot of fun, in, uh, emotion on both sides of it. So, um, I sent out a newsletter on Friday, uh, to our community and I just want to just touch on some points for those who may have not, uh, read it. You know, I realize, uh, there's a lot of tension going on in our community in the last seventeen to eighteen months of living, you know, during a pandemic, I think has taken a toll literally on everybody. And, and it, and it's hard, right? And sometimes not even realizing the toll it's taking on you. Um, it is, you know, and I think people's sort of levels are, have, are up here now. And so anything that happens, it kind of is amplified. And I wanted, um, you know, to just reiterate that, you know, I, I receive a lot of information from residents. Obviously, I speak to health professionals in my capacity uh, as the leader of this town. And I take it quite seriously. Uh, leading a town of sixty-one thousand people can keep you up at night. And whether there's, um, data that people have provided to me, uh, that masks don't really work or data that masks do work, and there's a lot of information on both sides of this. And so I try to convey that to our community in a very, um, balanced way to just say that, you know, as a leader, this was really the only tool I had in my toolbox, uh, to try to slow the spread of the variant that's moving through our community right now. And it's mostly impacting, let's, um, be clear, is unvaccinated individuals, uh, who are, who are in our community. And, um, you know, and part of those unvaccinated individuals, and frankly, we have a pretty large percentage of adults who are unvaccinated, but uh, part of that is children under the age of twelve. Now, while we haven't seen any significant situations with children um, in our town or in our state, I didn't want to take the chance of anything upsetting our children starting school today. Uh, because I know how incredibly stressful this has been for families and believe you me, I have spoken to hundreds of parents over the course of this pandemic. Um, and there's a lot of emotion and it's been hard. It's been hard on families and it's been hard on children and I get that and I know. And so I didn't want to risk that at all. And so, um, I received some very good feedback from the newsletter, um, you know, on both sides. Um, and I tried to, in the, in, in sharing with our community, um, to talk a little bit about how this thing is, is getting, um, you know, getting really hot. And I wanted to just highlight how it's important, um, for us to treat each other with respect, um, and to engage in respectful and civil dialogue. And, you know, you, you, you're, you're, you're in the community, both of you, and you, you see it. You're seeing what's happening, um, on social media, some of the, some of the things that happen and the way that people speak to each other. I mean, honestly, it's, 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 it's stunning to me. Um, and I, I, I just try to, to appeal to our community to, you know, it's okay to have a disagreement. It's okay to have a different point of view. Um, but it's not okay to be rude or name-calling or just horrible things. Um, and, and frankly, I, I, I just, I want, I know our community's better than this and I know we're all under stress, but I, I want the every, I'm calling on every adult in this community to, to be mindful of that we are all neighbors, that we live together in this town. We are Fairfielders and regardless of our, regardless of our difference of opinion, we need to treat each other with respect. And, um, so I'm continuing to ask for that, um, and I've spent, I can't even tell you how many hours, uh, talking to people on the phone. Who were either, who, before I did put the mask, uh, policy in place, you know, so whatever way it goes, people have very strong opinions. And I'm always open to listening to all opinions because that is my job, um, as the leader of the town. And so right now, I feel like this is the best way to try to protect our community. I don't know yeah, to what extent it does, but I believe, um, it's the tool I have. And so I, I would, um, also talk about, and I mentioned this pretty strongly in the newsletter about vaccinations, right? So there was one up in Greenville Hill a few weeks ago. They had a mobile clinic come up. And frankly, it wasn't a huge amount of people getting vaccinated. And, um, we're gonna try to have some high-profile vaccination clinics, uh, set up in the town. But I find that the most persuasive, um, the most persuasive, uh, impacts come from family and friends in our community who say, hey, you know, friend, or hey, sister, or cousin, or brother. Uh, why aren't you getting vaccinated? You know, it, it's, it, you know, according to medical professionals, you know, these variants really are, are much more apt to move around when there's unvaccinated people. And so I would just appeal to both of you and to our entire community. If there's people in your family or your friends who, who are afraid or have some reservations, uh, about getting vaccinated, um, to, to speak to them and ask them to speak to their doctors because uh, that's really how we're, I hopefully we'll get through this and we can get back to normal. Because I know this is really weighing on our community. I know it. I hear it every day. And it breaks my heart and I, I wish I could fix it. I wish I could and, but I can't. Um, I need everybody to do this with me, so, um. So that's, uh, that's kind of my two cents there and, um, uh, that's it. Uh, I do want to say, um, for everybody, uh, you can text your zip code to GETVAX, G E T V A X, and you can find a location near you if, uh, but again, if people who are on the fence about being vaccinated, call your doctor, talk to your doctor about it, um, and, you know, I'm just really appealing to our community, uh, for anyone who's not vaccinated and can be, to please get vaccinated. And I'll open it up for any discussion, uh, by the board.
I don't want to say anything that is gonna taint that message because it is profound and true, so thank you. I will do my part to help, um, spread that message of, of vaccination. So thank you very much for your, your strong words in that direction. I appreciate it. And, um, it saves lives, so thank you.
Thank you.
I would, um, Brenda, I would echo the commentary on, on vaccinations as well. Um, in addition, your commentary on treating us all with, um, dignity and respect, whether it be when you're a keyboard jockey or face-to-face, um, I think is very important and well timed. I think in a situation like this and, and you happen to be in the hot seat relative to the town, um, there's so much conflicting information and no right or wrong answer. There's an opinion. Um, there's reading of facts and really you're learning it, um, as are the health professionals, real time. And, uh, erring on the side of caution when, when the facts warrant that is, is the appropriate thing to do, uh, because if you don't and, and God forbid something, um, negative happens, uh, that would weigh on you as well. So I think, um, we can agree to disagree. We can debate the merits of it. I think as a country, we should have a significant postmortem related to how we manage this entire process when it's done. Um, but I think we do need to keep our cool and, and do need to, uh, respect each other and respect our differences of opinion as we go through it.
No, and I, you know, it's gotten, um, it's, it's really gotten out of hand. Um, and so I, I will continue to uh, say, um, online and also, you know, if people have an issue that they want to speak, uh, to me or any of you about, uh, they shouldn't tag us on social media because that's not an effective way to communicate with an elected official. It is to email that elected official or call them. And I, uh, I know you both are always welcoming anybody to contact you and of course, obviously I am. Um, I, I, I take, um, that very seriously and I try to be available to anybody who wants to talk to me. Um, I do want to just mention too, um, I had said this in the newsletter, there's getting some little bit of heightened awareness where people are like kind of becoming masking police. Um, and it's like when we first started this, uh, journey back in the beginning. And so, you know, saying, calling out, I saw this, I saw that. Now, you know, we sent out flyers to all the businesses that we had email addresses. We worked with the chamber, we worked with the economic development department. Um, it took a little time for people to get up to speed. We had revised guidance. I included it in the newsletter. It's also on the website. I have repeatedly said to people, we simply don't have the resources to police. Everybody's saying, I walked in there and this person didn't have a mask on. So I respectfully ask people, um, you know, to, to realize that our health department is still doing an, an inordinate amount of contact tracing, especially now that people are engaging way more than they ever did. So that contact tracing is much more, uh, complicated and difficult for the health department. And, um, so I don't think we want, I don't think anybody in our community wants uh, police or anyone else, not that they would, could do that, you know, running around, uh, because someone walked into a restaurant and somebody didn't have a mask on or a retail store or whatever it is. So I think for the most part, uh, if you all, I, obviously you live in our town and you go into stores, uh, people are wearing masks and maybe the occasional person isn't. So I just keep telling, um, our residents, um, to please, you know, worry and wear your mask. And, you know, if you see flagrant, um, violations, you should call the health department. But if there's an occasional person in a store without a mask on, um, and, and, and businesses are aware, I sent them a separate message. If they need our assistance with enforcement, we're always there, obviously, uh, for any, any kind of, um, issue they're having. So I'm just asking for, again, for, for respectfulness to each other and to our entire community and hopefully, um, people will be listening to that because, um, it's gotten out of hand and I think it, we all need to be part of, uh, being good neighbors to one another.
Good.
Right. Right, well, I think, uh, that's it. All right, uh, motion to adjourn.
Summowed.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Goodnight ladies. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Goodnight. Good night.